All right.
Motion to come out of executive session. No actions were taken. Can I have a motion to send?
Got a vote on it.
Did we not vote?
Aye.
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 Abstentions? Nays. Chair votes aye, six zero. I thought we voted on it, sorry. Can I have a motion to send twenty-six maiden lanes pop property requests? Set it to planning and zoning for an eight twenty-four review?
A move.
Bob Finley, second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays. Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Ping Chang. Rory will be in touch with you and let you know what the next move is.
All right, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I should disappear from now, he's all?
If you want, or if you want to stay on and have some fun with us, you're more than welcome.
I'll hang around a little bit, thank you.
You're welcome.
Please wait for two seconds.
That's a good soldier. Our meetings are fun.
I know. I like the friendly greeting at the beginning.
Thank you, I tried, I tried. We're a fun board, we all get along so well, and we all have the same goal. Um. Item number ten is discussion, take possible action regarding the Bricer fire compliance software agreement. Rory Burke. Where'd you go?
Maybe I could step in.
It was dark in here, so I went there.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rory.
All right, so the fire marshal approached us. And requested that the Board of Selectmen. Sign off on the town using this program, so. The basic idea is that. It is difficult for the fire marshal. As you know, we have a fire marshal and a deputy fire marshal, and we have a few volunteer. Fire inspectors as well, but they perform kind of life safety. Inspection of all multifamily properties, basically anything that isn't a one and two. Family property in the town's senior, and so it's very difficult for them to visit them all. In a timely manner, so what this program entails is. These properties and multifamily properties are required. To have like their smoke detection systems. And that kind of thing inspected on a periodic basis by by a third party. A lot of the times, they don't do this, and unless the fire marshals follow up. It doesn't come light until their next inspection. And so what this requires is. This company comes in and they do the compliance monitoring. For the town. We pay. And basically what happened. The way that this company makes money and the reason this is a product, because that was my question, why? Why they're not doing this, you know, for the good society here? They get paid by the inspection companies who are required to send them. Inspection. And so they they make money, they're not requiring anybody, we're not trying to make an undue hardship to businesses or. Works in town, but all it requires is that they abide by the standard that is already in place. And they do the compliance monitoring for us, and several surrounding communities have already signed up, that's where the fire marshal became aware of this.
It's a win-win situation for the town, really, what it does is it generates more work for them and gives them the reports, it makes it a little bit more efficient for both of them to do this.
There's no one costless.
Not to the town.
Bob, Rob, aye?
Yeah, when I was looking this over, I saw the the software is what kind of caught my attention. This is a program that they're going to be checking in on, the fire marshals would maintain. I worked, it was, like I said, software threw me off, so I actually reached out to Rob to see if Rob from IT had. Seen anything about this as a program, he had not. Is this something that he should weigh in on to see? I mean, is compatibility with anything, or this is something totally divorced from all other systems?
My understanding of it is that. So what'll happen sometimes is they, these companies generate these reports. And maybe they, maybe they send it, number one, maybe they don't send it, if they do send it. Is it in physical format, maybe they send it in electronic format? What this, the software component is that the reports are are automatically sent in a digital format that is easy. For the fire marshals. To organize and to search if they need to. So it. That's the software component, we would have Rob sign off, but I can't imagine there would be any issue.
Okay, what part of this necessitates needing the Board of Selectmen to approve it?
Any agreement needs to be signed.
That's the fact that it's a contract, that's what I want to know.
You're entering into basically a multi-year contract here, and what I would ask is if you. We did a quick review of the contract. And it left out, in our view, and also in the fire marshal's view, a good description of actually what the service is and what Rory just laid out, actually what it is.
Richard, what was your reading it? And I saw the same thing, I'm like, I.
No, you're absolutely, Bob, you're absolutely right, we looked at it, it has all the boilerplate, it even has some of the stuff that I would normally put into a contract for, you know, in Connecticut and this court and that sort of thing. But it didn't have the, the product wasn't described, so. So if you if you're going to approve it, I would ask you to do a motion to authorize the first select woman to enter into the contract, subject to changes and modifications acceptable to town council.
Richard, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Is there, would there need to be anything with respect to, because that's. The person's data, like, so basically, they're gonna own the. The person that they're inspecting their data, is that the way I'd see it? Is there anything there with the ownership of the data, like, is? It's there, because they're all, they're gonna log the people that they're going to do the service to into this system? So now they have a record of all that data? I don't know, there's, is there an ownership issue there, or?
Well, they're submitting it. Really for town review. As part of the.
We don't own the data, though, they do, Bricer does, right?
Who's the client, we're the client, right?
But, yes.
It says down ownership of data, client owns all the data provided by client. And received from third-party contractor for.
Bricer shall maintain appropriate administrative, physical, and technical safeguard for protection and confidentiality, but they they still have the data, though. I don't know.
Yeah, they're gonna store it, they're.
If I may, Rob, or Bob, I apologize. I I spoke when the the fire marshal approached us about it, he said his one concern would be, okay, we we sign this agreement. Three years, whatever the term of the agreement comes, what happens to the data?
Right.
Do we keep it? And it is our data, and it comes with us, and if we move to a new provider. It's it's cloud-based storage, so it just, it travels with us.
Yeah, it's it's an XML format, so it's something that's portable, I mean, they can, they can give us all the information that we would need. Okay.
Is that, is that in the contract? Or in their proposal, rather?
The XML format stuff is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, what makes more sense to approve it with conditions or to? Table it, have things changed so that we can vote on a better version next meeting?
I'm I'm perfectly fine with anything you guys want to do with it.
Well.
I mean, for for my point of view, I always like revising a contract and presenting it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my preferred way of of operating.
Opposed to. As opposed.
As opposed to.
As opposed to us approving it and you having the final say.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do it, Chris, we've done it, you know, when we've been pressed for deadlines and times or state filings and things like that, but. I always prefer bringing the agreement back if if we have time, and Rory, I'm not aware of any great time pressure on this. Is there?
I believe so.
Okay. So you could table it, and and, you know, we will be reaching out to the people. To add a description of the product and actually what it does, and and we'll take a look at some of the other clauses. That have given us a little.
Yeah.
Maybe aren't as quite as clear as we would like.
I want to understand the game a little bit, you know?
Right, and we want something with a little bit more meat in this.
I'll make a motion to table.
Motion by Pat, second.
Second.
Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Item number. Eleven, this. Discussion of intake possible action regarding the twenty-twenty-one farmer's market in your packet, you will see that you have an email. From Gazies stating, good morning, I'm getting a late start this season, the farmer's market request to return May eleventh through November twenty-third. Tuesdays from twelve PM to six PM at the community center parking lots off Derby Avenue. Hope as well, we've had a very successful season despite the COVID-nineteen challenges, we expect same situation for coming year. Can I have a motion to accept the farmer's market?
So move.
Motion by Bob, second by Trish, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero, it's always good to see the local markets. Okay. Discussion, take possible action regarding the hire of administrative assistant to the first select woman, I will hand this over to Rory Burke.
So, guys, remember, Malia, who was in our office, left the town in February. And we started, I believe the job was posted within a week or two, and we started our recruitment, and we actually received an excellent slate of candidates. Such that it was a difficult decision to make, but ultimately, we decided on the candidate that was included in your packet. We feel that he will be an excellent addition to the office. He has a great amount of experience. And we're excited for him to start. The collective bargaining agreement that he will be subject to has a provision which allows the Board of Selectmen to bring candidates in. At a level higher than step one, if they so choose. And due to his experience and his quality as a candidate, we're requesting that you bring him in at step two, rather than step one. Step one.
What, you cut it?
I'm sorry?
You are asking, we bring him in at what step, because that cut out?
Oh, sorry, step three. So, so so that you know, the current step progression that is in the collective bargaining agreements for the town progresses a candidate. From. The probationary period is six months, and they progress to step five, which is the final step at the beginning of their second year of employment, so it's a very rapid progression. The the position when it was added. Step one comes in at thirty-nine thousand dollars. And step three is is forty-three. So what we're asking is. We'd like to bring him in a little bit advanced, where he would be. If I'm not mistaken. After one year of service, this is where he would be.
This is Trish. I just want to make the comment that if we consider that we want to make sure that we're doing this consistently for other rules. I don't know if anyone else in the meeting can recall, but it seems like sometimes, and I'm not saying it's to this rule, I can't remember specifically. But it seems sometimes we say we don't do things, and then another position comes up and we're going to. Kind of change the rules, so I want to make sure we develop some consistency. And. How we are managing. Hiring someone, and I'm sorry, because I had to call in, I'm echoing myself, I don't know if you can.
I can.
You're fine.
Go ahead, Chris Bowen.
I just want to ask, what did we do with Malia? Did we bring her in at a higher level?
Uh, no, Malia came in at step one.
Okay.
Rory, have we done other positions where this, we've hired a higher staff because we have felt it's warranted, or have we said? We're gonna follow the process of the steps from higher until they reach that point with the town?
To my knowledge, I don't believe that we have brought another candidate on at higher than step one.
So if we bring him in at. Step three. Then we're kind of laying this baseline for future hires.
But that, oh, sorry.
Yes, no.
I agree.
Well, not only that, but I'm wondering, could that be, could that be used against us in future collective bargaining negotiations? I guess that's more of a question for Mr. Baterla.
Well.
Rory, how many other candidates were there? I'm sorry.
Well, let Rich, why don't we let Rich answer the question first?
Great.
Yeah, let me just say this to Chris. A a union negotiating committee will use. Any. Example that they can come up with to try to advocate for. A greater wage increase, and I think, you know, on the management side. The argument here would be that it's not the steps that are flawed, or the. Salary scale, it, the the greater, the the higher step. Is reflective of this candidate's unique experience level. You see this sometimes in education, you see it more in education than you do on the municipal side, but you may see it also with other. Municipal employees coming in from the outside, if, for example, you had a, well, just hypothetically, say you have a senior department head. Coming in from the outside with. Great. Experience, and you wanted to hold a that particular individual, you might bring them in or her in at a higher level, so. They will, you know, the the, Chris is right, the the union will try to use any example. To advocate for a greater wage increase or or higher steps or fewer steps. But management will. Will point out the unique. Basis, and you'll have a discussion, and you'll have a negotiation, that's what goes on.
I'm just gonna give my two cents. I completely respect wanting to hire someone at a level to measure it with their experience and what they bring to the table. What's unique here is adding municipality and having bargaining units and. A history and all fairness of what expectations are set. I believe this needs to stick with the steps as. However, that's laid out in the contract to start and to move through, it is relatively quickly. There's benefits to working for a municipality that obviously general. Corporations don't benefit from, so if someone wants to work for the town and ultimately reap some of those benefits, then it would behoove them to go ahead and start and quickly move through those steps. Especially without a precedent for it, I wouldn't doubt, I personally would not be in support of mitigating that, because I can see many people. Applying for various jobs, and now we have a precedent, and we now fight to start them at a different step. So that's my two cents.
And it's really just like an evaluation period, I mean, at the end of the day, that's the way the steps work.
Okay.
To answer your previous question, Chris Bowen, there were, I believe. We had probably twelve applicants, eight of whom we interviewed.
Okay, so let me ask this, and I understand this is subjective, do you think that this candidate is so head and shoulders above? The other seven that you interviewed, that we would have to set this precedent? In order to get them, knowing, by the way, what our standard evaluation period is? In other words, I'm assuming that the candidate in question understands that we have a system in place.
We we have never done this before. And we recognize that it is unusual. And we chose to ask for it all the same. He he is an excellent candidate, I think he will bring, he will hit the ground running and bring real value, but I know Anne Marie has to.
Okay.
I would like to say something. First of all, I only interviewed with him for five minutes, a couple minutes, Rory and. Chris interviewed most of the candidates, but I have to ask this question, this board take the time to look at his resume and read his letter?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good resume.
Did you understand that he worked for the city of New Britain?
Yes.
As an intern, yes.
Twice, and the town of Burlington.
Okay.
As well as ran, was on their WPCA board. I have. Right, I don't, I don't want to set a precedent of bringing somebody in above their pay, of of what the starting is, right? This is, this, I told Rory, you know, this is something Rory and Chris spoke about. But when we talk about, when we talk about what somebody is bringing to the board. What they are bringing to their position. We have to look at what they are bringing, what the knowledge they are bringing.
And what you're saying, Men of First Selectmen, is that, are you making the argument that this candidate's experiences in New Britain and Burlington, et cetera, as well as his prior experience? At UConn, et cetera, you feel that this warrants the step?
Not at all, to a step three.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, he was only in, while I respect that he worked as an intern in New Britain, it was only for a short period of time.
Right.
No, I I agree, I just want to make sure, I understand, I don't want to start this precedent, we have pay grades for reasons.
Right.
We have pay grades for reasons, and I wholly understand that, but sometimes people just. And and not this board, because we all work well together and we're able to talk about things and and bounce things off each other, that's what I love about this board, right? But I want to make sure, everybody just looked at the resumes and saw what he is and see and sees, saw sees what he is bringing to us.
Right. And I don't, I don't think anybody on the board is questioning what he's bringing to the table, because it looks like that, but we do have a process that we follow.
Exactly, but I had to ask that question, because I was, oh, did anybody look at his resume, are they just going off of this because they don't want to pay him that way? That's all, I I understand our steps, and in. And trust me, I I just did this budget, trust me.
Yeah.
Well.
Because it's, I'm sorry, it sounds like he's maybe potentially overqualified for this particular position. That's at least the impression I get looking at the resume, I mean, he's the commissioner of WPCA, that's that's a pretty good experience.
I don't think he's overqualified. But I mean, he definitely brings experience to the table, but it's still following the town's process that's quickly moved through. And let's face it, guys, if we're going to speak honestly, there's a lot of, again, I said it before, I I can get really specific, I'm not sure you want me to. But there's a lot of things and benefits to working for the town that you would never see in a corporation, so I don't see the need. To make a special case because someone has. A stronger qualification over others to start the job. So quickly move through the steps, and if they recognize the benefit of working for a town, then they'll stick with it. Until they reach the grade level that they truly feel where they're worth, and in the meantime. We're kind of, we're able to retain them and see how they're doing in the position. There's lots of times people look beautiful on paper, and it doesn't necessarily work out that way when you get them in the office or doing the job. I've got nothing. Specific to this employee, I don't mind any of this stuff at all, that's just the way it goes.
Are those steps time-based? Rory, I mean, is there any specific time base on those today?
Yeah, they're they're all timed.
Okay. I mean, the only recommendation that we can make then, I mean, if you wanted to, if they wanted to get there, we could shorten the time base, we could think about something like that to make it, no?
That's in the, that's in the contract, so that's.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
If I may, just to address some of the things, we did, we did two rounds of interviews, the first was a standard interview, the second was a practical interview. Where we had the candidates come into the office, gave them a series of tasks to complete, and what we had them do was just. Sit at the desk that they would be sitting at and answer the phones as they rang. And the reason that we're confident about this candidate is that he was able, we we prefaced it by saying, we understand that you may not know. Where to direct people when they call, you may not understand where everything resides, it's different in every municipality. This candidate. Got it all right. Without any assistance. That that is the reason that we're asking, so, you know, I won't say anymore, it's just to say, you know, we we designed the process to see him in action. So that we would avoid what Trish was describing, where they interview well, they have an excellent resume, but they may not be a good fit.
Well, I I read the mess, I read his resume and his cover letter. Kind of, you know, I feel, you know, he's probably well-qualified for the position, but. To go along with Chris, what what Trish said and what I originally said is. I don't think we should be. Going above. What the contract calls for, I don't think we should be jumping it to step three. This would be, if we brought this individual aboard, it would be, would be an excellent opportunity for him to fool himself in a number of ways and therefore would be worthy to be moving along quickly through the steps to, to get to step number three. So those are my comments.
Okay, so do we take, can I have a, a motion from the board to hire this administrative assistant?
No move. Second.
Motion by Bob Finley, seconded by Pat Lombardi, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Nay. Abstentions. Chair votes I, six, zero. Or if you can find out when Stephen Perry could start. Thirteen, discussion, take possible action regarding the potentially naming a French Park baseball diamond in honor of Bob Kellow. So as we know, Coach Kellow passed away unexpectedly. We were approached by Spoonie, Coach Booney about naming the baseball diamond after Coach Kellow for all the hard work and dedication that he has given to the baseball team as well as his students in Seymour. We received a letter, I think Rory forwarded it to everyone in your packet from I think it was from Spoonie that was in the packet. It was supposed to all be sent out, but then though everything kind of got a little crazy today.
It was, Spoonie referred me to the obituary, which I sent out a link to as well as a letter from a resident to you, Anne Marie.
So the letter from the resident is from an Anne Lynch from Assumption School and Church, which is, I hope this email finds both well, because it was sent to Selectman Bruno and I. I typically would never do this, but since I know that both of you are involved in Seymour, I figured I had nothing to lose. And it's regarding something that means a lot to me. I'm emailing you about an action that will take place tonight on your board meeting. To my understanding, your board will be considering allowing part of French Park or even a dugout at French Park being named after a dear family friend of mine, Bob Kellow. Bob Kellow unexpectedly passed away in July. It was a shock to his family, friends, and to the Seymour High School baseball community. Coach, as most people refer to him by, was a teacher at Seymour High School for years, but where he spent most of his time was at French Park. His love for the game and his players ran deep. Coach gave a lot of his time to the Seymour community, so I hope we can honor him at French Park, a place that he truly was happy at. Did you, there is, and then his obituary. Coach Kellow finally known by his community as a friend and coach, had a 32-year career as a math teacher and coach at Seymour High School in Seymour, Connecticut. As head coach, Coach Kellow compiled an impressive record of 438 wins, 239 losses, included six league championship, 23 playoff appearances, 11, 11 semifinal appearances, six finals and a state championship in 2007. Coach Kellow was twice named New Haven's Register Coach of the Year. He was once named Connecticut Post Coach of the Year. 60 of his players went on to play baseball in college. Forty-five of his players were selected to all league teams. Twenty-five of his players were selected to all state teams and six players signed major league baseball contracts. Coach Kellow was inducted into the Seymour Hall of Fame in 2018. Bobby graduated from Seymour High in 1978 and received a bachelor's degree in math from Southern Connecticut State University in 83. As a teacher and coach, Bob was tough and determined, but also had a heart of gold. He had lasting impact on his students and players and was a loyal friend, son and brother. Former players state that Coach Bob Kellow was not only my coach, not only a friend, but a part of our family. We I, when we bring this up, I remember Selectman Stanek, God rest his soul, was wondering how we name things and why we name things. And I remember Gary Park being one of them. I remember why we had mentioned Al Yagavane had worked on the gazebo at the Broad Street Park. So I I had, you know, bringing it up to the board of Selectmen is, you know, naming the diamond after him, naming a dugout after him, but we cannot change the name of the park. We cannot change the name of the field, but we could name a dugout after him. I would, that would be on this board.
Why couldn't we name the field after him? Like, for example?
It's the French Memorial Park Field. That's why. We can name the diamond itself, but not the baseball area because it is the French Park.
Okay, because I'm thinking, like, for example, Bob Langfield at Casa Grant or something like that, or even.
Although that was left by the Casa Grant family to, to the Little League. French Park was, was left to the town of Seymour as French Park.
By the French family.
By the French family.
Dugout would be great.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in favor if we can name like the home field dugout because it's gotta be the home, you know, you want the home field dugout. That would be the.
No. The away team so that he can curse them.
Very good, Barbara.
You can name, you can, we can name the dugout, you know, Bob Kellow dugout. But that is up to this board to make that decision.
The, the dugout would, the thing about the dugout, because when they name a diamond, it, it's, it's not as visible as the, what you can do in a dugout, you know, signage and everything else. So it's probably best that you name the dugout, have a seat for him in there.
Yep, I support that motion.
I, I'll motion that if we can name the dugout. Absolutely.
So I have a motion from Bob, Rob Van Egan, a second from Bob Finley. Do I have?
This is the home dugout, right?
Home dugout. All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Oppose? Chair votes I, motion carries to name the home dugout after Coach Bob Kellow. We will move this forward. We'll have a dedication. We will invite all the board of Selectmen members. Great. Discussion, take possible action regarding an economic development director. Alright, I guess we're going to be ready for battle here on this. We need an economic development director. I, I, you know, we have an EDC commission. You know, Chris Bowen, you're on that EDC commission. Bob Finley, you're on that EDC commission before you both came onto this wonderful board here.
Me too.
Van Egan. Yeah. Four out of, four out of the seven.
Four out of seven, right? I beg of you. I know we're waiting for COVID. But for the love of a duck. We, we gotta.
Description, don't we?
We have a job description. The job was okayed by us. We have the money in the budget for the past year and a half. We've had an EDC director. If you, if we want to move Seymour forward and start getting on the board, we need to take action. COVID, May 1st, half of everything is open. May 19th, hold on, Chris, May 19th, everything is opening back to normal. I need to get an EDC director in here. I can't have Rory answering phones for EDC, having the EDC attacking him at a meeting because he's not giving them a list. Enough is enough. We have the money in the budget. We need to do it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Let me ask one question then. We've got $45,000 in the budget, which we already determined was insufficient for the duties that we need.
Part-time.
Part-time, right. Can we bring on an EDC director part-time with the possibility of going forward full-time? Kind of like a, I'm just trying to think of a way to make this work.
Yeah, you're hitting on something, Chris, that's important because we have half a year, we have 45, we, we have a, a half a year salary that we could start at half into this year's budget. Just the next year, we're going to have to vote on a full budget.
Right, and I'm, and I will campaign for the life of me on that. I've been, ever since I got on that board, it's been the number one priority I've had.
I know, Miss Lombardi, you're trying to say something and go ahead, go.
I'll defer to Pat. He's got the experience.
Well, I don't want you to defer to me, but I'm all in favor of it, bringing somebody aboard in a part-time position. And I think that, you know, once that person is chosen and comes aboard, now we have an opportunity to down the road be looking at what they've accomplished and so on and so forth. And then we can look at, you know, possibly moving, moving that person into a full-time position, but I think you're trying to put the cart before the horse. However, I am in favor conceptually of down the road doing that. But right off the bat, the money's there. You know, we probably have about a 90, I'm going to say at least a 90% occupancy rate with the businesses in the downtown area. And that person's job just isn't the downtown area. And we all know that. We're all, you know, we're all on, on the Economic Development Commission. But I think this is a starting point for us and I think it's a good starting point.
Selectman Bowen.
I could just get on board. I know it's hard because I can't raise my hand. I'm sorry. I can get on board with a part-time economic development director because I think Rory does need to be freed up. He can only wear so many hats and be so productive, right? Before I, and again, I agree with Pat, part-time to start and if they're really moving mountains, I might be able to change my mind and get on board with full-time. We've had a full-time EDC direct, or I'm sorry, full-time ED director before. And I don't see what came to town or what really alleviated taxes where I'm convinced a full-time director is needed. I know that's not the popular answer on this board and I am the biggest proponent of looking forward face and making sure we're positioned properly, but I really need to see someone in the position part-time and seeing what they're accomplishing. And is it really necessary to go to a full-time position? But part-time I can go with for tonight.
I, I would want a part-time position until this part-time position shows that it is worth putting into a full-time position. I agree with the board on this, but we need to do something. We can't just keep kicking this down the road. We need to do something. I'm happy with part-time. I agree with part-time. And what we have to understand is, no matter who we put in that position, it has to be what is good for the town. Not what's good for me, not what's good for Rob, not what's good for Bob, not what's good for Chris, but what is good for the town of Seymour and moving this townward forward and getting us to where we need to be. Personal opinions have to be put aside and we have to be the, pick the best candidate for this position. This is for the residents, for the town, not for us. Not for Rory. Agree?
Yes, everybody's been on board that we need, there's no question that we need.
Of course. But I'm still not convinced, first off, that part-time is the way forward. And I'm not just thinking about now, I'm thinking about down the road, let's say three, five years down the road, whatnot. I've been campaigning for a full-time economic development director with the job description that HR drew up. God, for three years now, and that's as long as I've been involved. We need it and we need it to happen and we're so close at this point. But I want to make sure, if we bring on somebody part-time, could it be with the intent, is this the time to means test this, basically? I still am convinced that for the better of the town, for the better of the business community, a full-time economic development director is a requirement, basically.
Right, but Chris, I think that's what everyone's saying. We've had a full-time ED director before. I know you're relatively new.
When was this?
Just need to see it.
Yeah, it was during the.
See the works and who this person is and what are they doing? What's, how is it benefiting the town? Is it really now worth going back to full-time? Because we didn't bring a whole lot of new business before because we don't own property. There's reasons behind it. We, you know, there's perception too, right?
Okay. So I have a couple of points there. One, are we talking about Mr. Messor was the full-time director?
Yeah, name names.
He was, but Chris, I.
No, what I mean is.
I'm happy to chat with you offline as well, but I'm not saying no to it. I'm just saying tonight, we're starting at a, it's kind of a starting point and we're getting everyone together and I think everyone agrees we need a part-timer at least to start and see what they do. We could talk about what's the plan for three to five years, but I think that really is gauged on what work is done by this person that we hire and what we see the benefits to be, what they can bring.
We need, the reason I brought, the reason I brought it up was because my recollection was he was part-time. But furthermore, Mr. Roy's tenure was 12 years ago. A lot changed in 12 years.
Yeah, but I think, I think the last EDC director may have left, not 12 years ago. He was in that position for a while. And it's no disrespect to the last EDC director at all. But I think at this point in time right now, we have to go by what is in our budget and we set the budget for a part-time EDC person.
Right. Now, is that for the.
Road, we should go full-time, but let's see what this part-time EDC person, ED person can do for us.
Okay, so now this $45,000 that we have in the budget that we've honestly had a debate over in the budget. Is that until the end of the fiscal year or is that the calendar year?
Fiscal, everything is done fiscal.
Okay, always fiscal.
Okay.
July 1 to June 30.
Okay, so what are we doing at this point? Are we putting out, are we voting to put out feelers for a part-time position?
Not feelers.
With this.
I think we would make a motion for HR to.
Start the process, advertise for it, get the candidates in, interview, hire.
If we're willing to do that at a part-time position with the, you know, and we can consider down the road. You know, the, the first select woman says we need this. We've all been saying we need this. Let's go or get off the pot. Let's do it. Now, I propose a mo, I'm putting forward a motion right now to instruct human resources to put out a job description for a part-time economic development director.
Second.
Well.
You can't do it that way, right?
Why not?
I hear what you're saying, but they wouldn't be necessarily putting out a job description. A part of the job description should become part of how we advertise for candidates to be interviewed for the position.
Right.
Because.
Okay.
The job description is two pages long.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is we've been discussing this for the past year.
I understood.
And if we're really going to do this, let's do what we need to do right now. I mean, let's go or get off the pot.
The, the only point I'm trying to make, Chris, is that all, all those things that are encompassed in the job, job description, which we all weren't happy with and we sent back to Chris, okay, to review and he came back with what I consider to be a very thorough job description. Those, all those items, okay, and elements that make up that job description cannot be included, okay, in the initial process of interviewing, you know, of advertising for candidates to come in.
That's not what Chris is saying.
Well, what am I, start the process.
Start the process.
You want to start the process, so now we're gonna start looking, we're gonna start advertising, we're gonna start looking.
Don't have a problem with that.
Right, that's what I was saying, and uh, thank you, Mr. Van Egan, uh, for that, I appreciate that. Yeah, that's it, that's all I'm really willing to do. It's basically just a formal declaration of, okay, now we're getting serious.
You made the motion, I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Let's get an EDC, move this forward. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank Joe Pesci. And thank you too, Chloe.
Seriously, Chloe. Okay, next, item number fifteen. Um, discussion to take possible action regarding the fair housing resolution. In your packet, we have a fair housing resolution, the town of Seymour. I will, I will read that resolution into the minutes. Fair Housing Resolution, the town of Seymour, whereas all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice, and whereas federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, family status, or national origin be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and home ownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing locations and whereas Connecticut Fair Housing Laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, family status, learning disabilities, physical and mental disabilities, sexual orientation, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental or and home ownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing locations and whereas the town of Seymour is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws must be supplemented by affirmative statement publicly, endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Seymour hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing, and enjoy all other housing-related services of their choice on a non-discriminatory basis as provided by the state and federal law, and be it further resolved that the Chief Executive Officer of the town of Seymour and/or his/her designated representative is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the town of Seymour, and for advising such person of the right to file complaints with the State of Connecticut Commission of Human Rights and Opportunities, or the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, or seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, legal service, or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her rights to equal opportunities adopted by the town of Seymour on this date. Signed me, could I have a favor in accepting this resolution? Motion by Bob Finley. Second by Pat Lombardi, all in favor?
Uh, quick question, may I ask what necessitated this?
It's something we do every single year.
Okay. Alright, I mean, most of this is in Wisconsin law, but okay.
I, I, I know, is for some reason, we have done it after year, after year, after year, after year, for some reason, we, we have done it. I don't think we have to do it again. Attorney Burtula, do we have to do it again? Because we've been doing it for twenty-five years, is what I've been understanding.
I actually think it's being done to designate you or your designee, the Fair Housing Officer for the town of Seymour. I think that's how Seymour started doing this, uh, and we'll take a look at whether it has to be done again in the future. It, to, to Chris's point, that is a wonderful statement of federal housing law that you just read, yes.
Okay, and we also got state statutes eight thirty G, et cetera. I'm, I mean
Well, eight, eight thirty G is different, that's the Affordable Housing Act. This is, this is basically the nondiscrimination provisions of, of federal and state law.
Okay, I got, I just wanted to know if something happened that led to us making this declaration?
Nope, it's just something we've done year after year, after year, after year, after year, after year.
Thought it was for every, each board, every year to, to sign up for and communicate that to the town. I thought that was why it's done. As the boards change, everybody's on the same page.
Okay, aye.
Did I make, Monica, can you tell me, did I make a motion on the ED director to go out? I thought I made a motion that we're going to move this forward.
Chris did, I said
I made that motion.
And I think it was unanimous, uh.
Okay. Alright. Just checking. Discussion and take possible action regarding Conservation Commission, Inland Wetlands Commission.
Hold on, did we have, did we vote on the fair, oh, did, I'm sorry, Madam for Select Woman, did we vote on the fair housing resolution?
Favor. Yeah, the motion, all in favor, Chair votes aye, six zero. Sorry, thank you. Discussion and take possible action regarding the Conservation Commission and the Wetland Commission. So, on this, we have, we are required to have a Conservation Commission by state statute, and we have a Conservation Commission, but like most commissions, co, um, commissions, people come in, they get really, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go, and then they want to get up. Um, and, and then they want to go. And, and then they stop coming, and then the commission falls, but it's it, but the, the state law states that we have to have this commission. We also have an inland wetlands commission, and what this board wants to do is they kind of want to combine these two, these boards together, so that the inland wetlands is overseeing the conservation as well. They're two separate entities, and they overlook two separate things. So we're looking to the, this board, and I'm going to look to Attorney Burtula to give me his thoughts and opinions, as well as this board thoughts and this board's thoughts and opinions.
Well, my, my off-the-cuff view of this is that the inland wetlands commission is a regulatory body. Yes. That serves uh, almost in a quasi-administrative law judge fashion to issue permits to uh, rule on uh, violations. Uh, the formation of it is authorized specifically by state law and originally approved by the DEP. And it, it, my general view of this is that you should keep these bodies um, separate, because I think inland wetlands is, uh, is a very unique agency. It, it's it's as if somebody wanted to take the Planning and Zoning Commission and also make it give it some other function in addition to planning and zoning, and, and that is also an administrative uh, body that issues permits and, and, and can rule on various things. So that's my general take on it. From my perspective, I'd like to see the inland wetlands commission for the town of Seymour stay in its lane, basically, and be a regulatory body.
So, my, my question to you, Rich, is these are two appointed boards, okay, uh, twelve dash eight being, I believe, the inland's wetlands and a twelve dash twenty being the uh, Conservation Commission, which duties are spelled out within a charter, and if we did combine them, would we be in violation of the charter?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, uh, yes, I mean, it, to the extent, you, you just can't set aside a, a charter uh, commission, uh, I, see, it's not clear to me what they were asking. Uh, all, all I know is I saw the agenda item, and uh, in generally heard that they were looking to come.
It froze up again.
Tendons issues and the like with respect to conservation. I um, so generally, uh, let me go back to what I said before. The Conservation Commission has as its uh, authorizing statute seven one thirty-one A of the Connecticut General Statutes, the inland wetlands commission has different statutory authority. I think they should be kept separate. Your charter keeps them separate, um, I mean, you could have, to some extent, you could appoint the same people, but I don't, you know, I don't
That's kind of
I don't, I don't recommend it. I, I, I think they serve different purposes. I think you should keep your regulatory bodies separate.
Agreed.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, there's a whole lot of law, uh, you know, they, they're there to issue permits and rule on violations, and I don't, I don't think it should be mixed with another regulatory scheme. The Conservation Commission is not a regulatory body.
It just requires on the Connecticut General State Statute.
It's something that Seymour chose to do. There are towns that don't have conservation commissions.
Can I have a
I, I don't know if, if, if you're choosing not to do anything, I don't know if you need to take
That's why, that's why I stopped.
Yeah, I don't, select woman.
What was that, Rich?
I said, I, I don't believe you need to take any further action if you're choosing just to leave the uh, regulatory scheme and the scheme set up in the charter alone, and these are separate boards with separate functions.
What is everybody's thoughts on that?
I agree.
Fine. Well, great. If this came to a motion, I'd vote no, so.
Make no action, okay, so on that, we take no action. Item number seventeen, discussion and take possible action regarding the Fire Department abatement policy. So here we go again, we're back with this tax abatement program policy and eligibility requirements, and apparently it was not understood that we need, this needed to come back to us with, uh, when is this going to start? When is this going to put, be put into place? So now, the Board of Selectmen has to kick this back to the the town ordinance, the Board of Ordinance Committee. And the Board of Ordinance is going to have to come back and say, this, I don't see in here where it says, and that it could be me that didn't read it, we need to when does this take effect? Does this take effect starting July twenty twenty-one?
Well. Go ahead.
When, you know, there, um, it was approved on four twenty twenty-one. How often is this going to be, how often is this going to be reviewed?
If, if I may, I spoke with the Chair of the Fire Commission. Uh, the, the concerns that this board had the last time that this came to you um, were, you know, when does this come into effect, you know? Because it's a new abatement, how does this work? Um, and then additionally, um, you want to see a periodic review built in. So I spoke to the Chair about those two issues. They reviewed the ordinance as well as uh, the document that you have before you. In the ordinance itself, it requires every two years that this policy be reviewed. Um, so they, they uh, figured that that met your requirement uh, for review. It's already built into the ordinance, the ordinance for two years. Um, in terms of when does this come into effect, uh, the ordinance uh, sets a, a period of um, January first to December thirty-first, excuse me, for the accumulation of points under this uh, plan. If, if you approve, I added the tentative, and I will change it if it is not approved tonight, but the tentative approval date that is on the bottom of this document. Um, so if you approve it tonight, points can be accumulated until December thirty-first um, for this year's abatement. If, if you don't approve it tonight, it would be whenever you do approve it until December thirty-first.
Rory, just, you know, I, I, I mean, I improved the, the actual structure of the document, but is there a way we can have a template that that would define the ordinance that it's attached to, or something that would clarify that? Because not knowing that, you know, again, brought up all those questions. It's almost seems like we would have a, if we had a template that this spot, it was a fall under that you could reference the ordinance, it would just be a lot easier to follow, that's all.
I'm sure we can add, we can add a reference um, at the top if, if
It's like in a header or some, as a header, or, you know.
Well, in looking at the ordinances, and I'm looking at six dash thirty-six, okay, definitions, and when the initial program started, okay? And it, it's, it's spelled out, it's a certification date means January thirty-first two thousand two for the program year commencing January one two thousand one, and for each fiscal year thereafter. That's what our existing
Ordered it.
Ordinance says under definitions, that'd be uh, six dash thirty-six.
What else? Did anybody else have any other questions with this one? What is the board's pleasure?
I would be willing to make a motion that this is approved for this fiscal year. I mean, they're volunteers, and
Yeah.
If we had a paid department, it would be so much more expensive, so we approved the formatting of it, so I'm in support.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm in support of the actual, what it, what it's doing and the points and all.
Definitely in support, kind of want to put this to bed.
Yep.
Can we, can we take a, a, a vote and then go into discussion on this?
Oh, um, you need a motion?
Oh, I thought
Make a motion.
Discussion, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, Pat abstains, motions five zero one, discussion. I, I agree, we have to do something for our fire department, absolutely. Um, I think with the new abatement that's in, I would just like to see, maybe, you know, we do, we do refer to the the ordinance, um, but with this as it is with the, I thought it was twenty years, not twenty-five years.
No, it's six, there, that's where the confusion came, right? Because the uh, policy document, which was in our package, said twenty years. However, the commission's letter to each individual company captain, okay, said twenty-five years, and uh, that was my understanding, that And, uh, that was my understanding that it is, uh, sixty five, twenty five, not sixty five, twenty.
Well, I mean, if we say sixty five, twenty. Twenty, sixty five, twenty five. That's fine, that's what's in here. I have no for, problem moving this forward. Mr. Lombardi, I know you had some issues with it. Do you care too?
No, just, um, I, I mean, my concerns were that, you know, the document that was presented in our packet on March sixteenth, I think, which was the last time we talked about it, was that, um, the sixty five, twenty was written into, uh, the document in our packet, and it should have been sixty five, twenty five. Um, a review date, I, and my apologies, I was not aware that, uh, that was in the ordinances, but uh, so be it. Those were, those were my biggest concerns and that the document that was presented to us didn't even have a date at the top of the page. I mean, I, I think it's important that, and we've talked about this before, that, you know, documentation, particularly regarding, you know, policy work, we're going to be extrapolating elements out of this document and putting him into our existing ordinances. The document should be dated. Those, those.
I do agree with you there, Pat.
What's that?
I do agree with you on that.
With.
It should be dated.
Yeah, and that, that's where I was going with the template with Rory. We need a template that defines the ordinance, the day, and everything that we can have as, as part of the header, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It.
I just like the way that is. Alright, so can we have, if, if no one has an issue with this, can we, can we just move this forward and get this going? If no one else has an issue with it.
Yeah, we get the, this going, but I, you know, we can, I think we can follow up or we can do something about the template separately.
Right, once we have.
We already vote.
Yes, we did vote on this, by abstaining.
That's right, we did, I'm sorry. On one of those days.
Discussion mode.
Yes.
Understandable.
Okay. Great, so if we're agreeing, which we are, we will put this forward, we'll move this forward. Great, thank you. Lord love a duck. All right, um, appointments, we have no appointments tonight, right? Tax refunds and abatements. The tax collectors. Um, can you just look that over, make sure there's no issues in it? Can I have a motion to accept the tax collectors, um, refunds? Motion by Bob. I go by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain, nays, motion carries six zero. There, in your budget, you'll see transfers request, transfer control number five. Um, department authorized person is Chris Pelosi, HR Director. Um, amount requested. He's taking it from contingency into the workers' compensation insurance. We have a, a workers' comp insurance claim come in. It was, uh, for a heart, but heart and hypertension medical cost claim. Do you have a medical emergency? Go ahead, Rory.
Yeah, just if anybody, uh, has any questions, I don't know. I know it's a large amount of money.
Yeah, any background would be great. I mean, how often, I have never seen one of these before, how often do, uh, payouts like this happen?
So, Rich would be more qualified to give some ground into the heart and.
So it, it, they, frank, frankly, it doesn't happen too often. This is a long ago accepted heart and hypertension claim. There was a, um, a medical procedure done and, and the town is responsible for this particular benefit. This is a, a claim that was accepted by the town, uh, many, many years ago, from what I understand. It hasn't happened, it, in terms of a claim of this magnitude. That I can recall in the years that I've been town council. There may be one, but I'm not recalling one similar.
When this went to the Board of Finance, they had some concerns because it, um, about notice, it's our outstanding liability, um, and both of those are tricky questions because.
Well, the, the, the liability, it is our liability. It was accepted by the town a long time ago. So the Board of Finance ultimately approved it.
Yeah, it should have been somewhere in a budget if it was.
You, you know, Bob, on, on a retiree claim on an accepted workers' comp case that hasn't been closed out, you don't know when you're going to have a subsequent medical issue and a procedure that comes out of the blue.
Yeah, but you'd have it logged, you'd have it logged as a potential claim.
Oh, they, they have it, yes, yeah, they have the claim log, yes, yes, PMA has a history, yeah. There's an administrative history, you're exactly right. In terms of, did you know you were going to need this money this year? No, you didn't know because you didn't know.
Yeah, you don't know from a, a budget standpoint, standpoint, you'd have the claim as open.
Yeah, when I, when I saw this, I had similar questions and tracked it down to, to understand what I've just said.
And, and several years ago, um, as a result of, uh, some of the budgetary rules surrounding the Board of Education, um, the town and Board of Education, the town created a workers' compensation interservice fund.
Correct.
If the Board of Ed, uh, exceeds their budgeted amount for workers' compensation, the town has to cover it. Um, and so we created a fund to cover, um, large claim losses, uh, such as this, um, uh, this, this item is coming from contingency, uh, or we moved a lot of money around due to COVID uh, at the beginning of last fiscal year, and because this is such a large claim, um, they took it out of contingency.
Rory, do we have an open, do we know of all of our open claims of what, what they, right, so that you, we do have a record of all of that?
Yeah, so, uh, because of the, uh, Gatsby rules, every two years, we have an actuarial report run, uh, all of the town employees, and it's a staggering number, uh, in the tens of millions of dollars for all retiree healthcare and other benefits, um, but it is included in that, yes.
Okay, but that's a part of that, but that, that, that tens of millions is, is everything, these, but these are the actual that we've assigned to a, a claim or something that's been hanging out there for a period of time.
Yeah, the actuarial report is.
Total of that.
It, the actuarial report is, is, you know, a best guess for what they think our liability may be. You know, this claim may never have happened. Um, you know, we have outstanding hu- heart and hypertension claims, and they will never have a claim like this. Um, come in, so this is just, uh, you know, bad luck, I guess.
One that's gone through, right, exactly, okay, thank you.
You did.
I know. Can I have a motion to move this towards the Board of Finance?
I think the Board of Finance approved it, so I think it's a motion to approve the transfer. Rory, am I correct about that?
You're right.
Okay.
Well, it says Board of Selectmen, then it says Board of Finance.
Yeah.
So moved.
I'm curious, why is this one different from other transfers where the Board of Selectmen usually approves for movement over to and final approval from the Board of Finance?
I think because.
And this one seems to be in reverse.
I can't tell you that, Trish. All I know is I heard it went to the Board of Finance.
Well.
I don't know if it was the Board of Finance.
I'm speechless. I don't even know if I want to vote on this because.
I don't see the Board of Finance's signature around here, so. It has, I think they, I know they discussed.
Oh, so they did not vote on it, alright.
Yeah.
Then you, then you need to forward it to the Board of Finance. I, I didn't hear that correctly.
Motion by Chris Bowen, second.
Aye, aye.
By Bob Finley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two votes aye, motion carries six zero. Thank you. Uh, the next one is, that was it, that was all of ones, okay. Okay, correspondence. Um, we had in the packet was the, the information for Bob Kello, that was it for correspondence, public comment. Rory, any public comment come in?
Uh, nope, I've received none.
Okay, item number twenty three, Selectmen's comment. I will go as I see you on the screen. And typical Kirk stuff, Patrick Lombardi.
Well, I didn't, I know you were gonna call on me first. Um, just a couple of things, uh, kind of bring everybody, uh, up to speed on where Public Works is, uh, starting uh, spring preparations, uh, cutting so on and so forth. Um, we experienced or are, are going to be experiencing about probably a two to three week delay. Um, with street sweeping, the sweeper had to go out for, uh, some change, uh, new changes to be put on it. It was not due to, uh, lack of maintenance, just, uh, normal, uh, wear and tear. Um, Tony DePrimo, our Public Works Director, uh, has been diligently, um, which he's completed, he has put together a, a draft for trash recycling, uh, which is, I believe, been sent to uh, the first select woman. Um, also on the, uh, improvements to the scale up at the transfer station, uh, so, uh, he's been busy. Um, we are down one man. Uh, we had a, uh, employee, um, who took ill, uh, on the job site, uh, went into, um, the hospital, is now home recuperating. And I guess the last thing, um, I'm working on a special project, uh, in conjunction with Public Works and the, uh, Fire Department regarding, um, some debris, uh, and down trees, uh, in the Lower Line Park. Uh, we had a dog rescue up there. Um, there was some concern on Anne Marie's part, uh, that the, uh, Fire Department, um, would have difficulty accessing, uh, trails up there, uh, so we set up a subcommittee. And actually, um, it's myself, two members of Public Works and, uh, one of our assistant fire chiefs. And, uh, at this point, I can just tell you it's a work in progress. We've started the steps. Uh, we did a, a walkthrough of the, uh, area yesterday afternoon and, um, we'll be putting the, uh, cost analysis of what it's going to cost to, uh, get that done. Um, and then we will move forward with, uh, an implementation date, so that's a little, a little update on what's going on with Public Works, obviously very, very busy. Um, just on a personal note, um, both the, uh, Principi family and the Caruso family, um, have been friends of mine for many, many years and I am totally at a loss as to, uh, expressing any words of sympathy other than, I'm sorry, and Jimmy Principi, uh, may he rest in peace. Also Tom Caruso, may he rest in peace, and God bless them. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks. Bob? Finley?
Yeah, no, very sorry to hear about Tommy, uh, Tommy Caruso, he was, you know, known very well, so hated to hear that. Um, on, on either note, I did get a chance to go to the Seymour, uh, High School Girl softball game this afternoon where they beat Nagatuck eleven to four. Uh, great group of girls, great team, uh, so we have another championship team on our hands, so good luck for the rest of the year.
Rob, Ben, you go.
Uh, my condolences to families who've experienced loss recently. Um, and it's been a very tough year, and, uh, even the beginning of this year, uh, hasn't been too much better. Um, I know, uh, the state's talking about opening things up shortly, so I want everyone to still be as safe as you can. Um, I know we're all very anxious to get out there, um, but take the precautions that you need to, that you deem necessary for yourself. Um, and, um, we just hit three months today, so starting to get nights with a couple hours sleep here and there.
Oh, Alexander.
Well, knock on wood that tonight's one of his, uh, nights where he gives me a couple blocks of, uh, three or four hours, so we'll see. Thank you very much.
Little oatmeal in his formula, would you wonders? Christopher Bowen.
Uh, first off, deepest sympathies to Dee and her family on her loss today. Um, spring is, is here, and that means things are starting to open up, you know, Whitmore's is opening up, we'll have the ribbon cutting later this week, uh, Little League has opened up again in town, and I have the bruises to prove that. So, um, we're not out of the woods with COVID yet. I know we're all tired of it. Please go on the Valley Independent Sentinel and read the story about the woman in Derby who took all the precautions and we're so, we're so close to the end, you know, most of us have had our first or second shots um, of the vaccine. Please get scheduled for your vaccines if possible. Um, please, we're almost there. Um, we're still getting a lot of cases, so. Um, that's it, it's just, we're all fatigued, but we have to keep going just a little bit longer.
Trish Danka, thank you.
Um, I, first and foremost, my sympathies to the Carusos. Um, I watched these kids for about a year, the two younger ones, and they're a great family, and I just can't even imagine. Um, unexpected and, and sad, so, uh, again, my sympathies. I had an opportunity unexpectedly went to Whitmore's, well, like I need ice cream. But, um, under new management and very friendly, so with spring here and summer coming, please get out and enjoy. Uh, and give them some support. They're very excited to have taken it over. Um, and lastly, I'm hoping by our next meeting, I might be a grandma, but it's just really important to put out there. Because I might not be at the meeting if, if that happens.
We love babies at our meetings. Uh, congratulations, and Trish, I hope the baby comes soon, and, uh, condolences to, uh, to Dee and her family. Been rocking very, very hard, very hard. I will let the board know. Um, any arrangements, I will keep everybody informed as I hear things. I will continue to forward on to this board. Um, I've said it once before, even when, you know, when, when Kurt was first selectman, this board works very well to. Um, I've said it once before, even when, you know, when when Kurt was first selectman, this board works very well together. We all put the town resident, the town and the residents before. And 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 that's what we need to do, is continue to be there for our for our, not only for our fellow coworkers, but for the residents and and do what is right by them and for them. So, uh, on that, this day, I just want this data to get over with. It stinks and start all over. With a bright, sunny, rainy, thundery day tomorrow, I guess. So that I had kind of a motion. To. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
By Bob Finley, second by Trish Danka. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, motion carries six.
Good night, everyone.